This conference will now be recorded.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Monday, November 1st, 2021 council meeting. Our first item on the agenda is a call to order. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic which was founded, one nation, united in the physical, with liberty and justice for all. For one time, I propose to read the last statement in our main paper.
This meeting of the Denellen Borough Council is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Law, this meeting of November 1st, 2021, and that will be announced in the courier on January 7th, 2021, and as a teleconference is noticed on the official Denellen website on October 26th, on the public door to the board on North Avenue on October 26th, and again advertised in the courier on October 25th, 2021. Thank you all. Mayor Celento.
President.
Council President Dunn.
Here.
Mrs. Burke.
Here.
Mr. Pinder.
Here.
Mrs. Rios.
Here.
Mr. Sigma.
Here.
Mr. Vanderloon.
Here.
Okay. At this time, we have, can we have a motion and a second to accept the meeting minutes of our October 18th meeting?
Move it, Burke.
Second, Sigma. Any comments or questions or... Without hearing any, can we please take a roll call?
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Pinder.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, next up is item number four on our agenda. The diversity and inclusion committee put forward for council consideration a millennial conference regarding indigenous people. So, members of the diversity and inclusion committee, if you'd like to discuss the, or read it out for the meeting minutes?
Do you want us to read it first or discuss it?
No, you can. If there's no objection from the council, you have a degree.
Correct. Denellen acknowledgement regarding indigenous people. The land upon which the borough of Denellen stands is part of the traditional territory the Leni Lenape called Lenape Hokiti. The Lenape people live in harmony with one another upon this territory for thousands of years. During the colonial era and early colonial periods, many were removed west and north, but some also remain among the three continuing historical tribal communities of the region: the Nanticoke Leni Lenape Tribal Nation, the Ramapo Lenape Nation, and the Powhatan Renape Nation. We acknowledge the Leni Lenape as among the original people of the land in this region, and we acknowledge their continuing relationship with this territory. In our acknowledgements of the continued presence of Lenape people in this region, we affirm the aspiration of the great Lenape chief, Kaminan, that there may be harmony between the indigenous people of this land and the descendants of the immigrants to this land as long as the rivers and creeks flow and the sun, moon, and stars shine.
Thank you. Item number five on our agenda is a, an enclosed presentation in the public portion with Dawn Dutchell, our Denellen tax professor. Dawn, if you would, if I'm giving the council a public update on what's been going on.
Hi. So, some of you may have received a letter last week, and they're going to start doing the inspections, sorry, I have my glasses. And they're going to start doing the next portion of the inspections of our annual reassessment program during this week. And what's, last year when we did the inspections, they didn't do any interior inspections, they only did exterior. And part of the reassessment program is they're supposed to attempt 20% of the homes' interior inspections. And because of COVID, we didn't attempt any interiors. So to try to keep up with the program according to the state rules or the statutes that we follow, this year what they're going to do is, the next 20%, they're going to send out the letters that they've sent and attempt to do the interiors on those. Then they're going to send out another round of letters in a couple, like a week or so, to the houses that got exteriors last year to ask you if you would schedule an interior this year. The interior inspections are really helpful to keep the records. I know a lot of people are saying, oh, we just did a rebuild a few years ago. A lot of work has been done to the houses, and what happens is the information that I have gets out of date. And a lot of people are making renovations, especially now, especially last year in COVID, a lot of renovations happen, and you want to keep the records accurate so that your houses are compared to similar houses when we do the value. And that is the reason for the inspection, to try to compare apples to apples, so that your house is always being compared to similar houses, but not, you know, dissimilar houses. And that's pretty much how the program works. Also, with the recent flood from Ida, if you've had damage that you aren't going to be able to repair, you know, the basement was flooded and you're not, and it was finished, and you're not going to fix the finishing, you're going to take it out completely, or something worse happened to your house, please email me and reach out to me so that we can do an inspection and adjustment for next year. If something happened, like a flood in your basement, and you got insurance money and you're going to fix it, there isn't really going to be a change in that sense, because for this, this year, there isn't anything I can do as far as an adjustment for this year. It would only be for going forward next year. If something is changing in your home that you, you know, you're not going to fix, and you're not, and you won't be able to live there, or you lost your home, or you're not fixing it, and that, I would encourage you to reach out to me so we can take care of that properly. I don't know if, question?
So for the public after the reassessment is done, and you're going to get that white and green card in February, if residents or property owners don't agree with it, there is an appeal process, right?
Right. So in, around February, you'll get the cards, previously they were green, I think they're sunny white, not this year, not green cards. But on the cards, most people use them to do their taxes. You know, it's not really what they're for, they're for, that you know what your assessment is going forward for next year. If that value that says for 2022 what your value is, if you don't think that your house is worth that, that's when you need to contact me, and if we can't come to a resolution, if you have to do an appeal, then we can go do a formal appeal process. But at that time, value, and you say, my house just is not worth that, that's when you should call me, we'll talk about it. Sometime, I, you know, there's over 2,000 houses, sometimes I make a mistake. I don't like to admit it, but if you see something out of whack, that is the time to reach out and talk about it, because that's when we can fix it, and fix it a lot easier than if you let it go until your tax bill comes, and then your tax bill comes and it's huge, and you say, oh my God, what happened? Because at that point, we can't do an appeal anymore. So that's really important to know. Any other questions or?
Well, no, so if the council has any questions, or by this point, I will open it up to the public to ask questions solely for the purpose of what's going on.
I do want to add one more thing. Last year in 20, at the end of 2019, the law changed for veterans. If you are a veteran, that was, is permanently 100 disabled, but you weren't in the theater of war, you can still qualify now. Also, for the deduction, the same thing applies. The law changed in the end of 2019, so if that's somebody, you or a friend or somebody you know, please, again, have them reach out to me, so that's a benefit that you can have that, you know, we might not be aware about. Okay.
So I've already been seeing some questions on Facebook about this. Is there a single source that can be easily shared to those residents where they have all this information? I imagine there is, just on the web, clarify on the website?
I believe on our website, and also the website of the company who's doing the inspections has a lot of information as well, that PPA or the property, professional property also has a lot of information on their website.
Thank you.
Okay. Were there any questions on there that weren't answered?
Questions as, just, ask your comments.
Okay. I haven't read, looked at it or read it, so I don't, I'm not aware of it.
Right. Okay, so to answer that question, information's on our website. Yes. No questions from council, I'll open it to the public. Please get your name and address, and add Dawn's questions specifically related to what she's here to discuss. To your answer the question. Hearing any will close that portion. Dawn, thank you.
Thank you.
Dawn, Dawn does put out a tax assessor's blurb to go through Denellen Borough Council.
And I do try to, you know, if you ever, if you don't want to ask in this forum, I'm fine, please do email me, it's the quickest way to get a response. I respond usually within more than 24 hours, but definitely within 24 hours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dawn. Item number six on our agenda is to meet our new community emergency response team, our CERTS team. I see we got a great team in here this evening. Thank you for being here. Thank you to OEM Coordinator Homer Mosley, who is going to make the presentation, so.
Yes, before I get started in terms of introducing the 2021 Denellen's first CERT team, I'd like to just say a little, to the public, something about CERT, so you really know what it's all about. CERT stands for Community Mercy Response Team. These candidates, or no longer candidates, but now graduates, underwent a rigorous, eight weeks of training, usually three hours a night. They went above and beyond the course curriculum in terms of taking FEMA courses, and now they're ready to be deployed. And let me just talk about a little bit of deployment. They basically sometimes will supplement police, fire, and emergency services. Sometimes they will be the first responders, the first people on the scene. They have the ability to operate a leadership position and actually mobilize the people in the area under that direction, because they're that well-trained. They, another responsibility is that they will be educating the residents of Denellen on how to prepare for disasters. You'll see them at various fairs. There'd be establishing barriers in terms of whether or not an incident takes place, there establish a protective barriers. Many of them have went to traffic management school, and they are now certified to help assist the police department to set up cones. I mean, so this was a rigorous course as well. So they will continue to get education. They're going to assist OEM in terms of the emergency operations center. They also will be assisting OEM in terms of establishing shelters. It becomes a staff, shelter staff, I mean, the staff of shelter, as well as the manager of the shelter. So there's a myriad of things, but the community really needs to know that these CERT graduates are there to add to the protection, the health, and welfare of the residents. So now, without further ado, let me introduce.
Whoever is out there in the virtual world, you could just please mute your phone or your computer, so we're going to be back whenever it's out there. Thank you.
So without further ado, I'd like to introduce to you the Denellen CERT graduation class of 2021. Denise Allen, Imani Blackwell, William Carson, Reverend Roy Carlisle, Mrs. Carlisle, Wendella, Rebecca A. Christian, Malcolm Cumberbatch, Joseph P. Cummins, Ken Cyrus, John Finney, Melissa Hickey, Connor Caution, I'm sorry, Georgette Mosley, Christopher Muller, and Sharon Stewart.
Thank you. No, thank you, and you all stepping up and uplifting the plate and volunteering for our American miles, we have our support, and I know you'll be a good settlement to our emergency services, and you're under good leadership of Mr. Homer Mosley. Eric, thank you for working with Denellen, accounting perspective, and you all, you deserve to feel forward to work. God bless you. Okay, now to some fun stuff, business. Item number seven on our agenda is our resolution. So Dr. Robbins, you can just read it out, give a moment for a council member, just your comment is what it goes. We'll just give it a moment.
Is the video working on? A couple people saying the video's not working.
We have, it's working.
Okay. A motion to pay the bills.
Move it, Dunn. I get Rio.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Pinder.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Sigma.
Yes.
Mr. Vanderloon. Motion on number two, this is one for contract for the tax collector's quota.
Move it, Burke.
Dr. Pinder.
Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Pinder.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Sigma.
Yes.
Mr. Vanderloon.
Yes.
Motion on number three, this request of extension of time for awarding a contract for the Lincoln Ave. Roadway Improvement Fund.
Move it, Rio. I get Dunn.
As we discussed this with the partners in past meetings, because American Water's doing a lot of work around town, they're going to be, you know, here in the fall and the spring, it just makes most sense to postpone the project until they do the work. I'm touched based on that, to my report.
Do you think that there's going to be any negative response from the agency?
Yeah, the CME has already requested the extension, I believe you've been approved. We just have to get it done, I believe, by May.
Get it made, just a second. Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Pinder.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Sigma.
Yes.
Mr. Vanderloon.
Yes.
Motion on number four, this authorizes a shared services agreement with the Borough of Middlesex Fire Service. Move it, Pinder.
I get Rio. So I have a question, and maybe she's got the way in here, in terms of how does this add to or augment the current shared service agreements that are mutually agreeing with that?
From my, from municipal point of view, and I think from Middlesex, that's a clause in for insurance indemnification. That may be what they're seeking. I consulted with people offered earlier, and people speak themselves, of course, but some of these understandings are well-traveled, and Denellen's participants are mutually with many other agencies, so this is kind of a fair bones shared services agreement overlaying on existing system.
Well, the one comment I have about this is under the scope, as it's laid out, it talks about them responding to not just emergency situations, but also non-emergency situations, and specifically points out that anything that the fire department would normally participate in, you know, we're just calling on them to respond to, you know, emergency 911 type call, not other things that we help with town with, whether it's educational events, or participating in community events and things like that, parades or what have you. We're just calling on them for a 911 call, and we're not asking them to respond in total, we're just asking them to send certain apparatus to augment us until we're back in full alert. And that's, that's not the way that this reads at this time.
Yes, I'm not disagreeing with you, you know better on a practical level, but this offers the opportunity, if you wish to avail yourself, Middlesex is also a line of the agreement.
I mean, we, we don't need it. In my opinion, we don't need it.
I'd advocate and agree with you, but I'd say, if you wish to, you could, and if you don't want to, then no harm done.
So why don't we pay a list for a conversation around?
As soon as, as all this is likely, pass it out to legal council for review, no problem with that.
That's probably my, I mean, I've been doing some research, and it's my understanding, and I just had to find out, our existing mutual aid understanding with this neighborhood town and how we respond well, is covered under a state regulation of resource employment act, and I'm working with those property plans. We can, we can do that, we'll go over detail and see if that, if that informs us of it or if we get anything else.
Eric, we have a motion to stay with it. Motion, please.
Yes. My motion is second to table.
Second, Rio. Second, Burke.
Hold on, just trying to catch up.
We'll have a ten.
So, Phil, I have a question. We table, we table it already, does that mean that we can't go and share service with Middlesex for next year?
No, we can do, we're doing here today.
Okay. Thank you.
That'll be your screen.
Yeah, sometimes that. Everybody listens, so wait, I'll, I'll come back.
That's interesting. I want to report that the video is not, is it a POG?
You looking right at it?
Okay, the, the council meeting will be recorded, it'll be on the website, you'll hear us via phone call in, so, and it's live in person, so we're not violating any law.
Hearing on audio, and going to be the most.
Okay. Was it being on words?
There was a motion second, there wasn't a vote.
Yeah.
Uh, hold on a second, Burke.
I know.
Post.
Yep. Item number eight on our agenda, it's a consensus agenda, so, Phil, take it away.
At this point, we're to the consensus agenda, our practices that have a single motion and second, and the roll call both, wishing to remove any of the reservations, five to thirteen, if you say so, and I'll remove it, otherwise we do it all together. Anybody wishing to remove them from the consensus agenda? None, I have a motion and a second to go on the consensus agenda.
Move it, I'll second. Move it, Burke.
All right, Rio. I'll take the roll, Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Pinder.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Sigma.
Yes.
Mr. Vanderloon.
Yes.
Okay. We have a quick council discussion this evening that we have to do every year, and number nine, which is our best practices inquiry, you'll be late. Okay, step off.
Council members, best copies of the best practices questionnaire, best practices issued by the Department of Community Affairs, all by January 16th, July 6th, and January 7th, Jersey, is a set of questions, this year, I think, it was in front of the government council, starting with forty, some scored, some unscored, but the deal was financial matters, cybersecurity, transparency in Oakland, and many other topics. I believe the intent behind the best practices is to encourage municipalities to adopt policies that are cost-saving and efficient, because not a lot of follow-up from the EPA on the best practices, so we just received that about a month before it has to be submitted, but based on prior, how many, fifteen or sixteen that I've done, we learned from it, and we present to council, the idea through the legal council, consultation with mayor and CFO, good ideas that are set forward to the best practices, and we choose to adopt that as needed. So this year, oh, I'm sorry, the key element is that we've taken time to our municipal aid to satisfactory compliance under a number of yes answers in the best practices. We needed 15 points, we got 18.5, so plenty of room, and some of the no questions were simply inadvisable, something else. I go over it carefully in respect to the CFO's capital, which is that, the representation of Denellen's.
Investigation for ethics violations.
Oh, wow, that's out of turn. Okay, so it is good, and we'll, well, this, and this is the public presentation we have. Any questions?
I'll leave you all to the questions I asked you over email, presented to the other council members, it seemed like there was a couple of questions around cybersecurity that we answered no to, that seemed like maybe areas where we want to improve, and then a couple more questions, I guess, about the finance too, that we answered no to, that seems opportunities for.
What we've done is referring to is two questions about the cybersecurity, and we answered yes, and one we answered no. The first one was, do our officials and employees offer cybersecurity training? The answer is yes. You recall that I sent out in April, an opportunity through our GIP to take online training, and I did it again a week and a half a year ago. These are very valuable classes, and I encourage all elected officers and employees to get cyber trained. The second one has to do with an actual policy. I have a policy to draft for, but not satisfied yet with it, I haven't shown it to legal council or IT court presenting it to the council. So that is no, but you'll see it in a month or so when it's ready to find time. The second area was stimulus funding. There were no direct questions in the best practices on the use of the stimulus funds we're getting on about $700,000 over two years. There has been extensive conversation on how to use this money to fill in gaps from lost revenue, or to apply to infrastructure, and half a dozen other very valuable ways of using. to infrastructure, uh, and half a dozen other very valuable ways of using federal aid, but none of this has been decided yet, and it was all in the unscored section of the best practice. Okay, we're good? All right, uh, there's no vote on this, this is just a, fair enough.
Okay. Council report, council member Andrew Martin.
Um, you know, as far as I have, is, uh, EDMO, we have one with, uh, dying, some eight, five ways where, in town, go to, go to fire department, um, more use, kind of that, that, probably for November, or late November, early December. And that's my question, and that's.
Thank you, sir. That's my, where is?
Uh, yes, the Denell library, the calendars for the, uh, programs are in, uh, are up and full of fun programs, library be closing on Veterans Day and on Thanksgiving, uh, we will not have a meeting this month, um, Denell and Arts and Culture have two winners for, uh, one for the Fall House Decorating Contest, the house is on Madison Avenue, and then for the scary Halloween one was the Nightmare on Wood Ear. Municipal Alliance will be starting at such programs for the fifth graders who's left. The Carol friend will be collecting goods for Thanksgiving, and the A-juice is virtual on their Facebook page, so if you'd like to donate, please, um, check it out, and, um, anything is appreciated.
Okay, thank you. Council member Burke?
Sure, um, I just want to go on record, speaking, uh, coordinator mostly for organizing and executing the first CERF team, um, quite remarkable, um, these individuals, as he said, spent eight plus weeks with several hours of training each of those nights, and they're obviously ready to help establish our community, and, and some of them have already agreed to start turnkeying this out to younger folks, uh, which I think is really important, to kind of continue the process and build it out, and, um, also just to extend a thank you to Pastor Roy for continuing to open up his home, to, his religious home, to our community, um, he is certainly what I would consider, uh, you know, one of our outstanding citizens for the years of Canada. Um, the police department, uh, training is near complete on use of force, which is a recent, uh, state requirement, and they will soon be trained on body scan, which is also a recent state requirement. Uh, the rescue squad are continuing to, uh, welcome volunteers, and before they can have, uh, the ODR and office for elections in two weeks, on the fifteenth, um, I did, mayor sending an email this morning to start a meeting, if you mind just touching base about that. Um, the Denell report, please, uh, anything that's happening by December fifteenth, or January publication, um, and this is a quick question, maybe for Bill or for Warren, there was a question about the Rachel Clinic, and that it would be taking place at the firehouse this year, this month? Are we relocating that, or are we not offering that?
Yeah, yeah, there was one in Middlesex, we prior, before we went over that.
Okay, very good, thank you. Thank you very much.
Friday, twelve thirty, we can make that happen, I'll be at that.
Twelve thirty?
Yeah.
I will double check.
All right, fine, or you?
No worries.
Okay. Council president, John?
Yes, this is things tonight, uh, finance committee met two weeks ago, they told us the department has, um, submitted, uh, the required information, we, uh, have a lot to get back to you with, um, but we're moving along, and as, Mr. Robins, Dr. Robbins said earlier, we're working through some proposals for the use of the stimulus fund, but we'll conduct the council, uh, in the near future with, um, a proposal, so thank you, everybody that contributed to that, um, with the Greenbrook Flood Control Commission, I know the app has been out for a couple of weeks to send pictures of the floods, so everybody that sent pictures, uh, please send them again to Dr. Robbins, and those who can send on to the Greenbrook Flood Control Commission, um, that will help when they do the modeling for the area. Also on that note, I know that the, I mentioned previously at one of the meetings about the Blue Acres program, which is a, a state program devised by a federal, not federal, just flood prone areas, uh, I know some of the residents have applied, gotten previous, uh, some temporary, um, positive responses, so again, if that's something that interests you, um, please feel free to reach out, I know again, Dr. Robbins is coordinating those responses as well. Um, mentioned last meeting about the idea of a community garden, um, councilman Stigman and I will be meeting, I think, the thirteenth, so residents that's interested, so again, if anybody else is interested in joining us, or please start brainstorming about this, please reach out to either one of us. And then last, uh, the diversity inclusion committee, um, unfortunately, given the time food trace and the lack of funds, we had to cancel the, uh, event that we had planned for this month, for Native American Purge Month, um, but stay tuned, hopefully by next meeting, we will have a draft of a survey that we hope to put out to the residents, so, um, just thank everybody for their support as we build up that, uh, committee.
Council member second?
Yes, uh, for recreation, uh, Saturday, October thirtieth, was the seventy-third annual Halloween parade, we had over a hundred people in attendance, and the rescue department would like to thank, uh, Shirley O'Neil, who was the grand marshal for the parade, uh, thank you to the mayor and council for their support, and thank you to the police and fire departments, the rescue squad, and OEM with their CERF team, uh, also thank you to the recreation commission for always helping out with this event. Uh, reminder, Thursday, November eleventh, is Veterans Day, and the recreation department will be supporting the Denell, excuse me, the Denell and American Legion, and VFW post at their ceremony at eleven AM at Washington Memorial Park, uh, please stop by to support our local veterans in town, and that's it.
Thank you. Council member Andrew.
For a vacation, uh, May October twenty-six, George Johnson stepped down from the board, there is a new vacancy there, uh, next meeting, November eighth, there will be a special session. Uh, DPW, uh, resumed normal operations, uh, completed some extensive curbside and, uh, branch and tree pickup, uh, remember, you can always bring those down, so DPW ER, uh, they're continuing to patch, uh, the roads, uh, through town, uh, still two blocks on Lincoln be completed this week, and they are picking up leaf bags through December. Um, let's see, and they also assisted, uh, the twenty-third of October with the American Alliance for the, uh, clean up, uh, hallway, two truckloads of debris gathered during that time, so thank them for that, and thank you everyone who participated in that event.
That's it? All right, time, um, just a reminder that the election is tomorrow, Tuesday, November second, polls are open from six AM to eight PM at the Denell and Lincoln Middle School at four hundred Denell Avenue, all voting districts will be voting there, um, you can put your mail-in ballot, if you receive one, into the secure drop box at the library, which lives, correct me if I'm wrong, that's one hundred New Market Road, or I didn't get it wrong, thank God, um, and, uh, you can mail it in, so long as it's postmarked by, I believe, three PM, uh, November second, you can mail it out, and if all is failed, you can vote provisionally at the, uh, voting station. Okay, COVID nineteen update, um, since my last update to town on October eighteenth, has been made aware of eleven more new cases, so that adds to our cumulative total from the beginning, uh, we are now nine hundred sixty-one overall since two thousand twenty. Right, it's, uh, Middlesex County has reported, unfortunately, one more COVID nineteen related case, which brings our overall total to fifteen in the borough. Um, you can find, uh, Denell and Middlesex County cumulative totals on discovermiddlesex.com, and you can find more information on the vaccine rates and, uh, cases on covidnineteen nj.gov. Um, regarding the, uh, Denell neuro community presentation outreach, uh, that we did with, um, Rutgers blasting and Rutgers makes growth, uh, we hosted it on the twenty-eighth, we had a preliminary survey finding, um, you can continue to fill out the surveys for, I think, November tenth, for community reaction, and then the class will present it to the borough, um, so that's that. Uh, municipal alliance, I just received a letter, um, addressed to Teresa Albertson, who wants to be the chair here, where you're officially, you're two thousand twenty-three, you're receiving two thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollar grant, as well as additional, uh, supplemental award of three thousand five hundred and fifty-eight, um, so, congratulations, thanks for all that you do with municipal alliance, it's your entire team. I just want to give thanks to Union Catholic for inviting myself and, uh, our, our Alex, our recreation director, Alex Miller, to, uh, ceremony honoring sitting with Lockman on November twenty-fifth, it was a nice event, and, uh, well, we all know, city, city, our hometown. Um, the Greenbrook cleanup hosted by the mayor alliance for Clean Greenbrook Waterway, uh, we got approximately fifty volunteers, I just want to thank them, uh, thank you to the, uh, Lower Raritan Watershed Project and Clean Stream, uh, for helping organize it, uh, thank you to the six other mayors participating, um, I hope, I believe we're going to try and go for March cleanup, we try and do it twice a year, uh, so it's an honor, more, more than one side of them, thank you all for volunteering, for the DPW as well, and thank you to Tropical for donating five cases of water, sandwiches, and thanks to the duck coast for donating pizza pies, and also the boy scout and girl scout for their tip, good numbers, so thank you, Sam. Uh, regarding our Mill and Tine project, um, fifteen gives, we've installed all new gas mains on High Street and Lehigh, uh, along with new gas services to homes on those streets, um, also installed new mains and services on Walnut between Black, East, South, Madison, and also on South Madison between South Avenue and Walnut, uh, so, the streets that will be getting paved by mid-November, that's the prime line of county, we've worked out with, is Madison Ave from North Ave to South Ave, South Ave Road to Middlesex Corner, um, so basically all of South Avenue, um, part of, uh, road from Prospect to, uh, South Ave, all of High Street and Lehigh Street, and, um, so, you know, looking forward to having more paved roads in town. Um, good news, Alex and I have been working with New Jersey American Water, PSEG, uh, American Water has confirmed that they will be working, uh, along Mount Hugh Terrace, Madison Avenue, Washington Avenue, Fourth Third Street, um, where they're working, a significant portion of those roads will be paved at no cost to the borough, um, and they're looking to do more roads in the near future, which is good for us, that we won't have to pave roads that are done. Um, but considering that Middlesex County's middle pay program is going to need to know probably by the next council meeting about what roads to apply for next year, um, so council, Alex and I are going to make the recommendation and consultation to me, that front street, Denell Ave, and first street, and the Middlesex quarters, Madison and Doug, um, so we'll work out the numbers, we'll run it past God and see if the county can accommodate it, and, uh, you know, so, that's going to be my recommendation probably next week, council meeting, next council meeting. Um, speaking of roads, municipal, well, not that, municipal lines, NJDOT municipal aid this will year two thousand twenty-two, applying place, you receive five hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars, so that's for a mill and paid an additional, uh, some more test cases on that road as there's, um, significant water issues because of pumps, some pumps going out to the street. Um, good news from Raritan Valley, uh, American Alliance and both the Raritan Valley line, there's going to be additional peak hours on same, same platform transfers north, um, and then to replace in the North Portal Bridge, um, which, you know, your community, you know, it gets stuck and hours, and hours of community time goes by. Um, uh, regarding Greenbrook Water cleanup that we did, I just want to shout out Linda Carter Assemblywoman, who was there, um, good for that, no. That's it for me, that's pretty quick. Um, so, yes, uh, I just wanted to add another, uh, number that I feel is important, uh, in the COVID, um, numbers, and in September and October, there were, uh, a hundred and fifty students and faculties that needed to be isolated due to COVID exposures. Thank you for that report. Department head, before we open up to the public, Alex, am I missing anything?
Go ahead, you, you go first.
I'll give a report, uh, our fire chief, uh, as of Tuesday, October twenty-sixth, at seven PM, we went back into service, um, utilizing a apparatus loaned by, uh, Greenbrook Fire Department, uh, they loaned us an engine, until further notice, we're able to house it in, at their firehouse in their bay, so we also have our truck suit stays there, and our personnel have their apparatus, uh, have their gear on rack there, so we are responding to that firehouse, and we've been able to respond to several calls since then. Uh, we continue to be utilized Greenbrook and Middlesex, uh, on a dual dispatch, uh, service, um, again, as we discussed in the mutual aid agreement, uh, we are investigating, uh, another loaner apparatus from Jackson, other towns and organizations have also offered apparatus, but we're just won't pursuing right now, and if all works out, uh, within the next couple of days, we'll be able to house that in another bay at Greenbrook, uh, if that doesn't work out, we've also been in discussions with, uh, DPW, uh, hoping to use there, this is until we can get area, uh, space on our property, either in the, in the firehouse itself, or in a temporary building to house, house the, uh, apparatus and gear there, that's what we're, what we're looking to do. Ideally, we're looking to do it inside the firehouse, we're in discuss, in discussions with contractor there, looking to erect some walls around so that this equipment can be held in there safely while they continue to do their work, so, things are in motion, things are in motion, and as we get to this other apparatus, we're looking to scale back, uh, Middlesex's response is right now, they're just responding with what they have, we're, I'm looking to limit the amount of apparatus, we're not taxing that borough. Uh, work at the firehouse continues, uh, the contract is doing, uh, demolition work right now, electrical service has been put into place, uh, using a temporary generator, we're looking to have services restored once, uh, some permits are, uh, approved by the road construction department, I have emailed them, find out when that's going to be, doing it to power in, working for, uh, there to keep going along. Uh, one thing that did come up that may slow things down is, uh, that, that kind of the building, that was the expected due to the age of the building, and we're trying, the contract is delineating the extent of it, because that will, that will determine what kind of a payment has to be done, but that's all being worked through. And that's a pretty nice.
Thanks, very, thanks for all the work you've been doing, thank you, Pastor Phil.
Yeah, uh, just to follow up on what you were talking about, um, with the, uh, mill and pave, and the PSEG, and, uh, New Jersey American Water, um, thank you, mayor, for pushing a lot of this forward, because it's not only the streets that are going to be getting paved from these projects, but there's gas lines in town that are over a hundred years old, that are now going to be upgraded, new gas lines, uh, on various locations, and, and, uh, all the, uh, the area that you're talking about, New Jersey American Water, we're all getting all new water line, new, new main put in there, new services announced, new fire hydrants, so that, so it's a, it's a big improvement for the infrastructure of the town, and besides the fact that all these roads that are going to get paved on Ameri, on New Jersey American Water, PSEG, so it's, it's a very good thing for the town.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for helping, you check her, too, thank you.
Um, Jeff, that's, uh, Denell Rescue Squad Chief, um, over the last couple of months, we have seen a major increase in the number of calls we are getting from other municipalities, following that, uh, at this point, we are probably going into other municipalities twice as often as we were responding to calls in town. Uh, unfortunately, this is because this state of New Jersey EMS is in serious collapse, uh, there aren't enough B and Bs out there, pay departments, um, volunteers, it doesn't matter, people are leaving the field, um, there's various different reasons behind that, as you can imagine, COVID nineteen was one of them. Um, as a result of this, we're having a hard time responding to every, Denell, we've never had a squad turned down, request from our, from our neighbors, uh, when some of these towns are calling us, we are the forty-four fifth department they are reaching out to, so a lot of times people in the surrounding towns are waiting about a half hour before we receive a call. As a result of this, we are heavily taxed ourselves, uh, very stressed out, and there's a limit to what we can do, we are working very close with one of our mutual aid partners, the River Road Rescue Squad, uh, they have been helping us in bolstering our ability to respond to these calls, you may be seeing them in this town as well, unfortunately, there's tons of weird calls in the other towns that they're coming in on, so I do want to say thank you to our partners in the River Road Rescue Squad for being able to help, um, and unfortunately, as it's, uh, the state of New Jersey EMS is in. Um, and unfortunately, as it's that, uh, the state of New Jersey EMS is in very serious need. Anyone who is willing to be in the EMT, vote it left. Boy, honestly, you're a community institution.
Thank you, Chief. And we have a meeting with, uh, the vice president of the organization. I'm pretty sure this will be a topic of, while we're on emergency services, uh, two residents did approach me separately, one for police and I can then call responsible time for, um, a matter of applying and also to the Rescue Squad for a call to their child at a, at a support game and how professional your service is worth. So we applaud you and I just wanted to, you know. Um, okay. There's no further department comments or questions. We are going to open up the floor to the public. Um, but we're going to have to make sure everybody's unmuted there. Perfect. Thanks. And, uh, so at this moment in time, we'll open up the portion of the meeting for the public for any comments or questions, uh, related to the agenda or matters of the borough. We get that. Please state your name and address. That's all.
Hi, Chris Mueller, two four zero Prospect Avenue. Um, we have a, a township tree that's like two houses up from ours. And I think our neighbors might have sent in a letter to notify the town about the danger of that tree. It may be similar to the one that was taken down in front of our house when it gave a hole in the center. So I don't know if, if they've gotten notice on that yet.
Yeah, Chris. It's probably between two forty-two and the next house south of that one. If it's two fifty.
I need your number on here.
Right.
I'll have, uh, a deputy, uh, municipal clerk check on this tomorrow.
Okay. There's also one along the road, not on our property, on the property behind us. I probably should send in a letter for you to let them know about that one.
Before we notify, I should go ahead and write in. We have back in the convention.
Okay. All right. And then, um, lastly, I know we had a couple of conversations about protocol when we have sewer backflowing, which phone calls we should make first, second. Um, fortunately, I do have a ball valve if I'm home and it happens. I can shut off sewage coming back into my house. Where do we, do we still follow the nine six eight three thousand number at the police to, just to report the backup?
Yes.
They never send it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. I just, I just want to make sure so I know the right one to call.
Yeah, the reason why that is sometimes if you call the DPW building, there might not be anybody there. So this way the police, giving that call, they'll fall either myself or for me.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, you know.
Sometimes I may not fall in the middle of the storm because nobody's coming out to look at it and two feet of border in front of the house. Um, so I just do, it's just you guys have recording of it and know about it every time it happens?
For sure.
I have neighbors that it happens to and they never call. They never notify anybody and that doesn't help any of us to know.
Having the ball valve, so definitely does help, especially if you're home.
Yeah, we learn.
Hard way.
We have to agree.
And, and as long as we know when we call the police number that they're not, I'm just informing them.
Yes.
I'm not trying to be annoying. You can come out and look at my thing now, because, you know. And now is that something also that you guys are going to routinely maybe go back to looking at the sewer mains and doing cleanings?
Yeah, there's, there's cleanings that we do. We also, uh, can have a part split parts. We do a lot of camera work in the sewers and do different sections each year. And so we try to do different, you know, parts of the town. So, uh, you know, it's something that we're trying to do.
Yeah, okay. I just haven't seen them out front of my house in, in over a year.
There's even like, uh, removal stuff that we do periodically too, you know, so that doesn't have to be yours.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alex, follow up.
Yeah.
All right. Any other comments or questions from the public? Please state your name and address. Okay. Yeah.
Steve Chisino, seven twenty-one second. I mean, if I come, the whole thing not being answered, but I'm just curious, that is, when the fire, like, was everything that happened to the fire department? I'm just curious why we're having this whole conversation? You've got like little diversity committees and little parks and, and money going and stuff like that. And I've heard that the fire has been a desperate need of upgrading up equipment. So even if it's five hundred dollars here, two thousand out there, why is it going with the little public parks and, and committees and expenses for committees when you got a fire department and an EMT committee that is lacking on? Like, why are we just spreading money around? Diversity is going to happen organically. Like, I don't know why we need committees for words, nor do we need to spend money on promoting.
Um, so first and foremost, I'll try and address each topic that you brought to mind.
And that's as a town as a whole, not just.
I understand. Um, but I'm going to take your advice. So, you know, I'll try to address the best I can. Um, public park was pre-fire department and it was solely, I know it's a misconception that we use tax dollars. We did it. We've honored donations from local businesses, um, that supported it, promoted their businesses. Um, that's one. I heard an inclusion. They do not have a budget line item. Um, so.
Soliciting money last evening for, uh, like a movie for asking. American Indian movie.
Yeah, the verb, but we are working with, we're working on fundraiser.
Money.
We're working on fundraiser with the nonprofit side of the fire company. That's going to hopefully raise some good money with them, both with, as Councilmember Van Mark said. Uh, dying out for the FD. So we're working on it. It takes time. It can't just happen overnight. We've asked people to send donations to the company. My understanding is they are sending them in more so than they have in the past. In terms of what you're saying, fund allocated, it doesn't just work reach you that. So we are assessing the damage of our insurance companies. They have to evaluate. And then we have to see what we actually have to pay for the items that they need. So we are evaluating it. These men and women on the fire department are working tirelessly day and night with Alex and Bill and the later conference fire committee. Um, so we're assessing it. We have.
No, absolutely. I'm saying, but over the years, we're just like, instead of addressing the issues little by little, now it's come to a head. Now it's a big, a big chunk. You know, rather than over the years, put two thousand in here and, and little, you know, instead of all the little jerks of grants, especially with the taxes we've got. I mean, for the little resources we get in this small town, and I appreciate everybody who volunteers, does whatever they do. Not to mention rec, uh, police, anybody. But I'm just saying, for the taxes that we pay and the little resources that we get.
Well, we've been offering literally, I'm offering capital from beyond the ten. Their highest ever spent. In a pass capacity, the capital improvement plan, this governing body has made the conscious effort to start developing one. So that is taking all the departments.
Our dime. Like, we're all paying for it. We're, we're paying like literally more taxes than a million dollar house in, in Richwater would. Or, or Warren for little resources.
You're, you're saying that we need to fix things. I'm telling you that we're in the process of collecting the information to do so through a capital improvement plan.
I understand that, Chief, but I'm saying over the years, instead of throwing out little bits, trips aggressive money to committees and all that stuff, like, address.
Well, because if we don't, then you're not having recreation. They get, each department and committee or emergency services gets mon, money. I can see the budget online. You can, you can look there and go through it. And then we can have a conversation around what the money is that goes to them. But each year they are spoken to, they give them what their needs are for the budget and the council makes the decision to give them the money. So the corrective action plan is to our capital improvement plan, which is what the governing body has been working on. But there's a lot of things that need to be fixed in this town. It can't happen all overnight.
I've been here for fifty years and we've had broken roads, you know, I mean, it's, it's not overnight. I don't expect things overnight, but I'm saying it's not like it's just happen destiny. It's been a way.
I understand that, but we're, we're taking the efforts to make the improvements. We see five roads are paid this year. We'll hopefully see multiple more by April, which we get for free from New Jersey American Water. And we're applying for more from the county to have them paid at a lower cost than what we normally pay. So.
Some committees and we're doing ethics committee, you know.
Okay. Duly noted. Thank you, sir. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Yes.
Melissa Paulson, three eighty-four, when you're, uh, keep a study at the beginning, I wasn't going to say it again today, but just for the record, this is the public that's calling in and texting and whatever. Um, I asked Council President Jeff Johnson for an answer on her behavior. Since then, I've been accused of nails and tires and the same old scenario that, um, people refused the last election that she was running. Um, so for the public, I'm making a statement from my family. Um, I have nothing to be here tonight. We're not the kind of people that go around putting nails and screws in tires. I would never put a child, a teacher, an educator, I'd never put a child or a family in harm's way. Ironic, two or three days before election, happening again. Um, I'm the one that came and walked through the attention of the town and the public and the council of her behavior. It's also been me, or I brought my attention that there was another council member's significant other wife going around taking pictures of other public homes. Uh, it wasn't brought at a time, so I, I'm guessing it was a Democratic committee stunt. I, I don't know what the, we either put their heads together and that was the idea. They were going to go around and take pictures of tattered flags, flags that weren't hung properly. In the meantime, that caught taking pictures of children. Those pictures never surfaced. I've been told there's videos out there of me. Um, those never surfaced. So it's the night before election, um, people get out and vote, making points, get out and vote. Do what you can. Nobody.
Like, the core issues of that, that type of behavior, like, in a small town, like, that's not solved.
I mean, Councilman Tinder, do you want to answer for your wife and issues of driving by, taking pictures of her home in a black SUV, fitting her description? I, I'm.
It'd help you to tell me what black SUV you've seen.
I don't know if that's why they call.
A Ford, a Ford Explorer?
Nope.
No.
No. I don't know if that's why I'm asking.
Again, for the third time, you're asking me for.
If you're taking your head, no. I mean, do you want to answer me? What?
You're asking me for a statement on something that's a personal matter because of the capital.
I'm asking you if I have.
Again, you're here on the eve of an election. You've been here for three times, throwing accusations. The second time, my name is from.
Throwing accusations.
I have. You don't know you, you don't know. Really, kid? Everybody has opportunities, possibly. There is no proof that has been presented for any of them.
Jessica admitted it to me. She knows she admitted it to me. I followed her through her home, not knowing the car. And she admitted to me and numerous other residents that she took pictures of my home. To council members, to the mayor, she admitted it. They have conversations. The call, she admitted it. So now I'm not involved accusations, but then again.
You're accusing of her of taking pictures of your children?
Yeah.
And.
And she, she admitted that she took pictures of my mom and my children on the porch. You don't need to speak for her. No way, no. You took pictures of my children while they were on the porch, Jessica. You took pictures of my home. Yeah.
Mr. Tinder has made a statement. He denies that was his significant other.
Thank you.
Period. Is there any other comments regarding the matter, question from you, the council can address or the individual can address?
No, I just, I, I expect council to take a better, better step forward in the future for behavior like this. This is not the first time. And it's been said before that one of your council members has acted out of turn and public has stayed very quiet. Very quiet. You know, a lot of people know, it has been very quiet. It should have not been quiet. It was against better judgment, I believe, but it was quiet. So what I'm asking, coming here for my family and for the people of the public, was an answer. It was not answered two times by numerous, numerous. I was no apology. It was nothing. I wasn't going to say it again tonight, but then Steve said it. And I felt like if there's new people tuning in. If there is no, new people tuning in, they know what I'm talking about. I mean, I'm not just some crazy person that's following her around. I also was accused of coming out of the fire.
She didn't put any screws inside, but, you know, it's a bit, you know. So, I mean, this is great behavior and it's, we can't address it and nobody answers for it, but yet this is a difficult, like, kind of committee, like, as a council.
I mean, if there's not new council members coming in on January first, is the present council sitting here, serving the public okay with this behavior of a council president? Can anyone speak to it again? I, I just, I, are you going to vote her back in as council president? Bert, are you going to? Real? That's how? I mean, is this what you got to say? That's it. Can I respond?
Yes. Yes, you're able to respond.
Can I respond uninterrupted?
That's, that's my hope with everybody in this whole situation.
Does any of you know at the October fourth council meeting?
It's a prepared, it's a prepared, I mean, it's a prepared.
Finish the question.
I answered.
Sir. Just let her make her statement, please.
I made a public statement about the incident that occurred on October second, two twenty twenty-one. I remain silent since, but tonight I will break my silence. The current, the current discourse did mean a productive and does not help the people of Genellen. It's helping at all. It should be clarified that the people at the center of these accusations have a personal history with my family and my children. I can speak for myself in saying that these issues were not a factor in my actions. For all of you who are still curious to hear my side of the story, here it is. And some of you know, I'm also chair of the Democratic Committee in Genellen. Multiple people have remarked or noted that the poll count has an Arizona flag in front of their homes and suggested it was because of their support of Trump and the Republican-led audit in Arizona to discount election results. Many of them have also remarked, uh, it was ironic that someone relying on electoral system to get elected to borough council while at the same time rejecting the integrity of the electoral system. These same individuals told me about post-Malice Paul John's personal Facebook page celebration of Confederate flags and security.
Oh, reminder. I mean, she's wrong too. I'm sorry, I think.
Just one person. One person at a time, please. We have to have the forum and I understand there are people who are upset over various issues, please. I understand.
They all said Indiana will fly in the upcoming elections. But I wanted to understand what they were talking about before jumping to misguided conclusions. On the morning of October second, after dropping my eldest child off at Columbia Park for tennis and with my nine-year-old daughter in the car, we swam around the three eighty-four with the earth. They did not stop my car. They did not get out of the car.
Just, please allow her to speak.
I did not get out of the car. I rolled down the window and took a single picture of the flag sadly displayed on the exterior of their home so that I can verify when I got home that it was an easy Arizona flag. There were no children outside. No one ran inside crying and screaming that someone was taking pictures and stalking them. What happened next is a truly terrifying event. Melissa Paul John put her youngest child in the car and, as she has admitted, followed me home. Yep. I did not go directly home. Melissa, as she admitted to, followed me this entire time. When I did arrive home, Melissa screamed at me. She threatened me. Oh, my goodness, that was a.
Governor.
My, their. She threatened my family. My own daughter was terrified and ran around the back of the house. Melissa asked me not once, not twice, but three times why I was out her house. And I gave her the same answer the first two times. When she asked the third time I was there, I simply stated, you can keep asking me, but the answer is going to be the same. Why don't you answer my question about why you have an Arizona flag outside your home? At that point, I took out my phone and reported her and she set off. It is simply unintelligible that Melissa declared such false outrage about her own children's safety has zero regard for another woman's, woman's children's safety and well-being. And I gave a most mother's review after they felt unsafe that their children were unsafe. I called the police. I did not get in my car and follow her. We teach our children not to bully, but what happened over the following weeks is disgusting and abhorrent. And if any of our own children would have done what has happened since, surely we would all step in, would we not? I saw my close friends and confidants who have remained silent, who have not reciprocated the bullying behavior. To all of you, we know who you are. Thank you for your eventing support. To all the people who I'm so into on campaign trail and who have said you guys are doing a great job and ask about food drives and potholes and traffic and parking bloods, that's why I'm here. In my career and my life and on my work in council, I hope. That's how I do. I've always worked hard for the people of Genellen and I continue to do so. Being a council member is more than just showing up to events. So much of what we do is behind the scenes. Listen to our council reports, which are only a fraction of what any of us are doing. Ask questions about how we can help. Everyone who has ever reached out to me for help can tell you that that's what I do at Hope. It's why I'm here. And finally, a big thank you to all of you who have been quietly supporting me. It's not easy being. It's not easy being in the public eye, especially in this small town. You find out who your real friends are when it challenges you, and many of you know how hard this past year has been for me. So all the people who have shown up for me, who have supported me throughout all of this,
Any other comments or questions from the public?
I think it's, uh, people that you see though, seven, second street, a prepared statement for, you know, again, night before election, I mean, she's from, you know, but why is that, okay, I'm prepared today, and when we asked, was that that exact same story, what, six weeks ago? It was asked, I could have been settled six weeks ago. Why, why is it now prepared today, when she said six weeks ago, prepared today? And disparaging Melissa Paul John, who's like, given her life as it all, and lived there a whole time? Like, that's fair? Is that fair? That's, comes down to...
And I, I, so again, I never, again, put children on my way, I never exited my vehicle. I followed her home because my children came in, my children were on a screened-in porch, she is correct, they were not outside. They were on a screened-in porch, open to the front of the street, if you guys know where I live, it's the right Christmas house, open front porch. They were having breakfast on the porch, we saw her stop and take a picture, it was on my Ring camera, and she took off. I was pulling out of the driveway with my youngest because I was on the way to get her a COVID test because her second grade class...
But you don't even have to explain yourself for...
I will explain myself, and I will, but I will answer to anybody. My husband will answer to anybody. If anybody has questions about my supply or anything else, a symbol, that she did know us in the past, hey, it's been questioned why you have an Arizona flag. Oh, yeah, this is why. End of story.
Six weeks ago.
It was sneaky, it was creepy, and it was ridiculous. And that's it. Council, how has it ended up?
Well, I would like to hear, I want to give the public the opportunity to speak first. Yes, ma'am.
Three, three, good people in Mountain Dew Center. Maybe I missed it, but why does anybody care that the Pulse County have an Arizona flag on their porch?
Exactly.
Because I have, I have designed...
Melissa, I think the question's more about...
Is that, I mean, what kind of town are we living in that I can't hang a flag outside my house? I don't understand why there's, why we even need for the president to stop and take address.
Now that she has, she has to answer these? Now that she is interested?
I did address it.
No, but you have to...
I read it, I read it.
You have to get, so she have to answer that?
She can answer how she wants to respond, and the public may have the decision.
Okay. I did address it.
And I said, I may admit it, could you repeat it?
Sure, again, well, apparently, I can parry. Multiple people reached out to me and asked me about it.
But why was that a concern?
And who, right?
I don't know.
Mr. Fasito, one at a time, she's addressing.
Well, then you take your responsibility, that's a ridiculous concern when we have a firehouse that was just within the...
I have to have the forum in this chamber, please. It's, it's fine, I understand your concern, but she asked a question, you're answering it.
I just want to know if that's just kind of town we live in now, that everybody can give a good body, and everybody can call the council and say, oh, so-and-so has a flag I don't like? Because that's not the kind of town I want to live in or raise my children in.
Yeah, right.
That's all I have.
And I think tomorrow you'll have an opportunity to change the direction.
Yeah, right, I will.
Uh, Jeff Vett, four oh one Madison Avenue. I might grow up in Arizona. Is there actually any statute or any problem with everybody flying their home state of our house? And, I mean, it doesn't necessarily mean to know if you grew up there, but, um, I'm just kind of curious why that's an issue.
My understanding, if it's a free country, you can fly, but at least they fly as long as it's more than the American flag can under the center of West Side. So that's...
Sorry, I'm sorry. But why was that even addressed as a concern from a council member? Like, for, if multiple people are reaching out about their flag, why is that even a concern when we have bigger issues at hand than flags on the Paul John's house? Why is that even wasted, you know, her time on that morning?
I can't answer that. I, she answered it the way she wanted to answer it, and she's gonna have to be held accountable based on that answer by the government to help. Or come January first, if the council decides to make a change in council practice, those which will happen here. Any other public comments or questions? How did you, how many, I thought you raised your hand, I don't know if it's...
No, I raised, I didn't raise my hand, only because it was three weeks, what, three weeks ago, that I said I was gonna throw my hat in because I was embarrassed, okay, of what was going on. And I'm not picking sides, okay? I'm not picking sides. I said I'd throw my hat in. You guys are asking, you know, what changes we're gonna be doing, you know, so I won't say I'm one of the changes, okay? I'm gonna throw it in, just throw it in. I threw it in to find out and help this town what's going on. Like I said, I've been here thirty-five years, and this has never, never, ever happened. And I'm still embarrassed, okay, the accusations and everything else. And, well, what I can say is, look into it. That's all I can say right now. And you have the opportunity to make changes if you want. I can't tell you what to do. And this has to stop. And I know that tomorrow, the pressure's there, and it will stop, because either change has been made or it's not been made. I, I don't know what to say, but I took this, um, knowing that it was very difficult. And I'm, I'm for one year, I'm gonna do my best, and then I'm here around next year. So I'm just gonna use it as a test.
Thank you, Captain. Any other comments or questions from the public regarding Congress?
Hi, Jason.
Just one moment, what, what's your name address, please?
Jason, this is Sue Connolly, President of Danellan Fire Company. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
I, good, I just wanted to address the gentleman who keeps making, um, mention about the loss at the firehouse and how the borough should, you know, be jumping in. And I think, honestly, we need to switch gears here in this meeting and, and hear something positive. Um, as the president of the fire company, I just want to ensure the public that we're not at the point to be jumping up and down and, you know, demanding things and expecting things just be given to us and everything be back the way that it was prior to the fire three weeks ago. Um, insurance is still assessing everything, we are still inventorying, we are still assessing, we're down there almost every night, every other night, going through all of our stuff and making lists and getting everything that the insurance companies and that the assessors need. I touch base with the project manager every day. Work is definitely moving forward. Um, it's not gonna be to anybody's taste that they want, but this is the way that it's going to be. And I just want everybody to know that it's painstaking for everyone involved, the residents, the borough council, the mayor, the adjusters, and especially us as members. But we're all really positive about this, and we're taking away from this all the good that we absolutely can. Um, like, going through our records on Saturday, we found books dating back to nineteen oh two, and we just, all together, all of us that were there are just like in awe. On this year of our one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary, you know, these are the things that we're finding, and we're staying positive, and we're moving forward, and it will happen. We are responding. We have the, the backing of our two neighboring towns who aren't even questioning how long this is gonna last. They don't care, they're there for us, the residents are there for us, and more importantly, we're all there for each other. So again, I just really want to thank the borough council and especially the mayor for all their support and help in navigating this. This is uncharted waters for all of us, um, and we're getting there. And everybody just needs to stay positive and support everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you, President Connolly. Any other comments or questions from the public? Please state your name and address.
Hello?
Yes, hello?
Yes, this is Joe Paul John, three eighty-four Woodyard Avenue.
Hi, Joe, how are you?
Good, yourself? Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, council members, um, obviously, if we're in a state of talking over a flag, we've lost something in our whole perspective of what we are and who we are and our ability to, to fly whatever flag we want to fly, to have any thoughts, ideas, um, you know, agree to disagree, whatever the case may be, to have pictures of flags where kids were involved, has gotten to the point of beyond ridiculous. Um, and it's, it's actually a shame. Uh, I got written in to be part of this, uh, which took me by surprise. Uh, I am in it now, um, obviously thinking a little differently, uh, along the way, uh, but has gotten me laser focused as well as my team, and I support, I, I appreciate everyone's support that has been there with me, with my wife, with us, but as you can see, this has consumed some time over this kind of childish type of act, which is very unfortunate, whether it be a council member, in this case, the current council president, and I say current, um, but there, there's, there's these allegations, we're, we're a small town. Uh, politics and, and, and as far as parties shouldn't matter. I mean, I'm here in my name, and I know Steve Fasito is also there, is getting thrown around because there were screws put in someone's tire. Well, that happens when there's a lot of, uh, work being done and stuff being taken out. No harm intent, but that's when your mind goes one way, you think to attack and blame. And, and Ms. Dunn, because I'm hearing this, I do have to let you know that I did touch your vehicle a couple weeks ago, and that was to help your son and Chris, who on the record, I'm gonna say is a great guy, because your car battery was dead, and I provided them with the junk after soccer practice. That's something that people do. We're here to help each other. I could care less of one's relationship, somebody needed help, and that's what good people do. As far as this town and council, throw these parties aside. Republican, Democrat, the division is there, and it needs to stop. We need to come together. We're governed by policies, not parties. We're all in this together, this small town, together, and as a coach, I always go by that saying, there is no I in team. So I ask that everyone, there's a song that I've been listening to, my wife's been listening to, and I actually just mentioned it, Trina, Same Boat by Zac Brown Band. Please, on your way home, put it on the radio, put it on your playlist, because if you really listen to it, we should not be concerned about a flag. We should be coming together, everybody should fly what they want, and if someone doesn't agree with that, we'll find that common ground. Stop this nonsense. And I think the song is very fitting for this time, and I appreciate the time. I wish I was able to be there, uh, and that's all I have to say. So thank you, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you for those words, encouraged, positive, that is. In terms of nonpartisan, I would very much like to see Danellan move to those forms of elections, but it comes to the people to help you petition together on partisan election. So, uh, something to think about. Um, so, any other comments or questions from the public? Please state your name and address. Any other council members? Before we close, there's no new business, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. No new business or other business? I have a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
On favor? Any names? Okay, thank you.